This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So Bob, I want you to start over and explain that you haven't had to do overtime before?
Yeah, so in my tenure as chief and my old boss was Chief McMahon, we've never actually had to go back to city council for actual overtime. We've had to go back for shortages on incentives, shortages on buyouts, contractual buyouts for officers, but never for actual overtime. So this is a first for me, for sure.
And as I indicated, we have 140 in the budget and it's maintained again this year. So your actual for next year will be higher. And that's primarily a couple of things.
I'm sorry, I asked for, so for the upcoming budget, I asked for 200,000 and that got cut to 160, I believe.
I think it's 140.
Or 140, that's right, 60,000, I'm sorry, 140.
It was 140 last year, it's 140 here. But that's either here or there.
Right.
We anticipate that we're going to have a homicide. We can't anticipate, you know, somebody getting hurt and therefore you have to cover those shifts with people that, because somebody's hurt. But one of the things I'd like you to explain is the loss of special police officers, which used to fill in at a low hourly rate. And we can, because of the Police Reform Act, we can no longer have them. Can you explain for the public what a special was and how that's affected you?
Sure. So I've stated in public and to certainly the council and the mayor's office over the past probably two years now with regard to the police reform law that was going to affect our overtime budget. So essentially, the police reform law states that all police officers in the entire Commonwealth have to have the exact same amount of training. So what that did is it took away our part-time police officers, our specials, because they don't have the full-time police academy or equivalent. So what happens is the special police officers that we have either decided they're not going to continue to work or they have the option to bridge an academy, which would then give them full-time status. So once they have full-time status, there's no point in working as a special anymore. They can go and work full-time for a police department. So it dramatically is going to and has affected our overtime budget. So a part-time police officer would be paid $17 an hour to work a shift that would then, if we don't have the part-time police officers, the shift would then have to be covered under overtime. And the overtime would be for contractual time off for an officer, staffing for officers out sick, injured. But the bulk of it is just earned time off, contractual earned time off that has to be replaced and trained. So we would augment, and it's in our contract, we would augment these full-time beats with special police officers under certain situations. If the officer is out more than four days, if there's scheduled for training, if they're sick. There's a lengthy list in the contract that allows the administration to use special police officers. The problem that we're running into now is I don't have any. And the ones that I do have, you know, are looking for other jobs and that because they bridge and they have the full-time academy equivalent. So that's problematic. Where we're going to get into some trouble is when we have openings coming up, we don't have a specials pool to pick from. So the specials pool is always our hiring pool. I was a special. Almost everybody on our police department worked here as a special prior to full-time appointment. What we're going to run into now is when we have openings, we're either going to have to hire a cadet until the academy starts and then put him in the academy, or look for potential laterals from other departments. But in our experience, laterals from other departments are leaving their departments for a reason. Once they start establishing seniority, usually you're going to get somebody else's problem. Historically, that's, we've seen that happen. So it definitely puts us in a spot. The Mass Chiefs and the Western Mass Chiefs are meeting with the legislature, our regional reps and senators, the end of, actually the middle of next month for this exact problem with the reform law. It really affected Western Massachusetts and the Cape and the Islands. Western Massachusetts utilizes a lot of special police officers like we do for the reasons I had stated. The Hill towns exclusively only have part-time police officers. So that's going to put a major stress on the state police barracks that cover those areas. And the Cape and the Islands, their summer help are all part-time police officers that would want to, you know, they're younger police officers that want to work full-time. But it puts the Cape and the Island departments in a real spot when their population's well and they don't have the adequate staffing without their summer help of summer police officers.
Wow, okay. So we should expect our overtime, because even if you do get some cadets, they have to go through the academy before they're on duty. So when you have a retirement, you're going to be short a couple of officers. And you have to cover for those officers. So overtime is going to go up as it seems to.
Yeah.
You've never had to ask for overtime until this year, at least not for a long time.
Right. And this is a problem that's been addressed to the legislature by the chiefs, both the Mass Chiefs and the Western Mass Chiefs. It's basically the equivalent of the legislature saying, we're doing away with on-call fire departments and on-call firefighters and everybody has to have the exact same full-time firefighter training, to kind of put it in perspective.
Okay. Well, we also have contractual collective bargaining agreements that require us to pay the overtime, so.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, we have to do this. Not much choice, because you've already used some of it.
Yeah, our overtime's in a deficit now.
I just wanted to have you explain what you meant by that. And obviously, when you have a special situation like the homicide, you have all your investigators there, overtime, et cetera, so.
Yeah, I was hoping to have our one, my one and only homicide here in my career, but that didn't happen. And the detective bureaus worked around the clock with the state police detectives on this investigation.
Connie, you had a question?
Yeah, so a lot of residents asked me about how overtime is calculated? Like, so how are officers compensated? So I know that you have a base salary and incentives and, you know, on CPR training, et cetera. So how is that overtime calculated? Is it based on all of those factors, based on the base salary? How is that calculated?
Contractually, it's based on all of those factors. As you laid out, you pretty much answered my question for me. So the overtime is calculated base and then incentives are calculated into that. And that's all contractual. And there are different steps for amount of years on contractually. So the longer you're here, the more you go up in steps and the more you're paid. As far as the incentives go, there was a court case in Agawam that dealt with that, the incentive piece being included into overtime. And the courts ruled that the incentive is fact, is and should be factored in as part of the overtime calculation.
Thank you.
Tom? Tom, Omar, yes.
I do have a few, as always. Thank you, Chief, for being here. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, the police EMT incentive, is there's a one payment this year? Or is it a one payment this year and it's going to be part of the contract of the union to have it every single year? And the second question is, the paperwork that we have, the overtime of training and the CPR, say, cost in April and May 2023, that means that you run out of money and you need it for that?
Exactly, yep. So your second question, you're spot on, Mr. President. That money is for training. We actually just did firearms training and we have CPR first responder coming up. But as I stated earlier, we've run our overtime into a deficit. And that's state mandated training that we have to do yearly on top of a laundry list of other training that the state mandates. And that's always a line item that's always, always in the rears. Every year, training is always an issue. And to your first question, the EMT incentive, that's very much like the educational incentive. It's, that's 9% buried into the base. So once it's in the base, it's, they don't get 9% per se every year. It's part of their base pay, is buried into the base, if that makes sense.
Can I follow up on that? And that's if they get the training, the CPR training and all that they need, then they get the incentive?
No, the incentive isn't for CPR first responder. That's part of our duties. The EMT is above and beyond our typical duties and training. And often, more often than not, we're on the scene of a medical call ahead of the ambulance and the paramedics. So the community, the mayor and the union all agreed that, you know, having hired trained police officers as EMTs is vital and life-saving.
I agree. Counselor?
Just want to add, an experience that I had with the police chief and the fire chief relating to that. When we was, Friday, when we have the electric cars here, I was with the police chief and the fire chief. And the police chief was the first one to respond and the police officer was the first one to respond. Locally.
To what?
To an accident.
Right there, we had fire?
No, it was a four-car accident at Loudville on West.
And you guys had to respond?
Yes. And the police were the first one there. Locally, no one was really hurt that bad. But in a situation that I can see that someone would be really, it hurt really bad, having the police being trained to save a life, I think that's a good thing.
Because police cars are always on the road, they're always patrolling. So they get, they get to an accident and I witnessed that that day.
Yeah, that particular incident, we were in the vicinity of the four-car accident. So we obviously have an obligation to be, go right there.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone, anyone, mayor, anybody?
Nope.
I'll take a motion to approve 98,400 for the overtime budget for the police department.
So much.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Bob, next Wednesday.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
I know your other meeting won't be as fun as ours, so.
No, I guarantee it. Thank you, everyone.
Does anybody know, is Nicole's honor, is that Chief Norris?
No, it's this weird program that we can't get rid of. I don't know.
Oh, look at them, shut up. Just in time.
You can just take them out.
How do I do that?
Yeah, no, it is.
It is?
It is. It's an AI.
That's an AI thing?
Yeah. I don't know why it connected to that. We keep getting rid of it, it keeps coming back. I don't know.
So Chief, I was going to have you talk now.
At your appointment.
Only because we just talked about overtime with the police because Bob had to leave and I thought it would be a good segue to go into overtime for the fire department.
Yep.
If you need time, I can go to John Mason, but you're all set.
I'm ready.
All right.
Bring it.
So the biggest question is, I have two questions. One is full-time regular fire department, 100,000. I looked at the budget, this year's budget and looking at last year. Is that for the regular salaries? Like, we're at 1.727 million for next year, was last year's budget. Is that what that is, the 100,000 for to cover salaries for this year?
It is. So this additional supplemental request going into the last part of this fiscal year, when the budget was developed last year, the union was beginning their contract negotiations because their contract ended last June. So as we developed the budget, the budget was developed with just a 2% general wage adjustment going in there. So this request is to make up the contractual difference that was negotiated.
It was negotiated after the budget was already in place.
That's correct.
Makes perfect sense.
And then the answer to my question, that would go towards regular salary lineup.
Right. So the overtime pay, you know, I hate overtime, as we always have had overtime. And I know that, just speak to how this occurs. I know there's overtime in the ambulance area. This is overtime pay fire department. Is this not the ambulance area or is this both?
This is fire department ship coverage.
It's not the ambulance. It has nothing to do with West Hampton.
So in the fire department, we have two budgets. One is for the ambulance EMS and one is for fire.
Right, okay.
And in those two different budgets, there's two lineups for overtime. The one that is being requested as part of supplemental appropriation for 80,000 is ship coverage. The driving factors for overtime and ship coverage is number one, the contractual obligation. And in the contract, you staff a minimum of five people per shift 24/7. Then in addition to that minimum staff of five personnel per shift 24/7, other factors that contribute to that are family medical leave. So for example, when people have children, they may take up to 12 weeks of leave. So that leaves a vacancy on the ship, which then creates a higher-end situation. I had two military deployments this fiscal year. That also was a contributing factor to that. And then the other driving factor is when we hire people and they go to the academy, I lose them for 12 weeks. I currently have two people in this regular academy right now. So those are the typical ones for driving factors that generate the ship overtime leave. When you do a five-year look back, fire department, we averaged $235,000 in overtime each year. This request, we're funded at 140,000. This would bring us up to 220,000. And I think one of the best initiatives the fire department did was to support the mayor and her financial team was two years ago, we implemented a new train officer position for a captain. So now when the captains are out there in the day, that train officer can fill in and that required the need to fill on overtime. So this fiscal year, as of today, we've covered 260 hours of overtime with $13,000 in savings in overtime at that position as well. So not only are we getting the benefit of a dedicated officer to oversee both fire and EMS training for the entire department, it also offsets some of the overtime costs.
So I'm going to ask questions based on, I know the answers, but they're for the public. If you have five people on, that's not how many are in the station on 24 hours, 24-hour shift.
That's correct, 24.
And so you have five people minimum, but you have more than that in the station, don't you?
It depends on time of day. So I'll give you a, for example, possibly on a Monday morning, I have Dan Constantine who's a captain who does fire prevention. He may be out and about in the community doing inspections, the deputy chief, myself and the train officer. So you may have four people in the front office, you may have five people on the line covering the shift.
So if you have three ambulances, you have a third ambulance?
We have three ambulances.
If they all go out, you have to bring somebody in to cover them.
Correct. Right now.
I mean, you don't wait because there's somebody, some patient, somebody needing. So somebody has to go out with that ambulance.
There's five people on in the station right now. If a third ambulance call comes in, I cannot cover it. Call mutual aid because I only have one person back.
Do we pay for mutual aid?
No, we don't.
So obviously, having the three ambulances is helpful. Do you have other? I guess what I'm getting at is if you have five people on a shift and you have a need, because we cover West Hampton. If you have a need for that third ambulance, then it's mutual aid. How do you, why not have more than five? I'm saying this as a 24-hour shift and I'm wondering why we don't have more people in the station that can cover. So you don't have to bring somebody in on overtime.
So two things. One of the things, in trying to balance the financial needs across all departments in the city, we looked at other federal grant options. And one of the ones we recently applied for was a federal grant for additional staffing that could potentially bring our shifts up to potentially staff them at six. We're looking at that as an option. Obviously, that grant was submitted. We'll see and wait and hear what happens for that. The other thing I always try to remind people is that department, our department is not just an EMS department. If you look at our overall mission, our mission is fire and EMS protection for an entire city in North, City of East Hampton. So one of the things that we put in place in the fall of 2021 is about 350 times a year, a year, our ambulance goes to Bay State. When they go to Bay State, it's based on the state protocols that require us to or the severity of that call. So that ambulance with at least two people on it, if not a third, will be gone and out of service in Springfield for upwards of 90 minutes. So anytime there's a protocol in place in dispatch, anytime our ambulance transports to a hospital other than Cooley Dickinson or Hoyok, they will recall two personnel. That way there, it tries to allow us and maintain coverage for fire suppression while that ambulance is gone.
Okay. I remember these discussions. Thank you. Good. Mixa, you have any questions, Connie or Tom?
Yeah, I have a question. Same question I asked the Chief Alberti, put you in here. But I just get a lot of questions about people trying to understand how overtime compensation is calculated.
Yes.
And I don't always, I know there's a lot. And so can you just kind of explain how that compensation happens in terms of, is it base pay plus all the incentives plus education, right? Like all of those?
Strictly off of their base pay, that's it.
Okay.
They're all, they're all kind of stripped off their base pay.
Okay.
So that's interesting. So that's the difference in the contracts between police and fire departments.
That's correct.
But you have, what they don't have is you have five-person minimum, which helps. I guess it helps the firefighters know that they can't be called in on overtime if there's a five-person minimum in the station.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out why they don't have more base, more than just base pay calculated into the overtime. And that now makes sense to me.
Okay, we have, we have the educational incentive and the EMS incentive. But when you look at their overtime rate, it's strictly off of their base pay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Omar, Tom? I'll take a motion to approve 180,000 for the supplemental appropriation for the fire department, overtime and full-time regular salaries.
So much.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor? Wednesday night, in case there's questions?
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mason, you're up.
I'm here.
Now, I know that there is some debate as to what these parcels are going to be used for. But we're debating tonight the 38,000 to have the environmental review and soil sampling. That is to determine if there's contaminants in these areas. Correct?
That's correct.
If, and I think it's worthy, whether we use them for parks or for anything for the city to know what's in these soils. And that's because, I guess, the Ferry Street one, that used to be a chemical plant or have chemicals involved in whatever was there before industrially. So obviously, we need to test the soil if we're going to use it for dog park or skate park or whatever we're going to use it for. And I'm not debating what that, what we're going to use it for. I simply feel, personally, I feel it's a good thing to do. But isn't that the case that there was chemicals in these areas?
Not chemicals so much, but coal ash in the back areas. So this goes back to the eighties. Mayor Mike. In the 1980s, they, there's 800 pages of documentation that I've reviewed and actually had GZA review as well. We've spent over $6,000 out of our own budget looking at this parcel. It was brought to us middle of last year. And it's always been kicked about, like, you know, even Mayor Mike and Stuart looked at providing, putting park space there and what it would take. So they even reference park space back in the day, even in the, you know, that was in the early 90s. So this goes back a long ways. We feel that the city at some point has to either put an extra this permanently or put a checkmark that it could potentially be used for whatever the usage. But at the end of the day, finding out what is there is, I think, very important. And then we can go from there on what the city would like to do or the Parks Department or any special interest group that may be interested in this parcel. You know, with the work that's being done at Ferry Street, you know, there's a lot of, I think this ties in potentially to adding amenities to that area. The new city project will come to the, basically to the front door of this project as well, or potential area. So it's good just to, it's short money to get the, to get the answers and decide once and for all what this parcel and what it potentially could be doing.
This is city property now?
Yes.
It's city property. So obviously, the city might want to use it for something, whether it's park or not. Okay. Okay, I feel it's important to do. We need to know if coal ash contaminated the property. I mean, if it's park, going to put kids there. So I'm okay with it. Any questions for counselors?
How long will it take, this process take?
This is just review and soil sampling. It's not removing contaminants, right?
Yeah, this is, this is like a six-week start-to-finish process by GZA. Once they go ahead.
Chief, anything else? Counselors?
I do have more.
Counselor Gomez, President Gomez.
So if we approve this $38,000 to see if this soil is contaminated or not. So what is the purpose of doing it now? And if they don't have any contamination, how soon we're going to utilize that piece of land? Right? Because if we're going to spend almost $40,000 for something that we're not going to do in the next 10 years, is that we're going to do it just because we want to know whether it's contaminated or not? Or what is there? It's a ton of money just to do something that probably we're not going to do anything in that land for the next five, 10 years. I don't know, I'm just asking.
I think the mayor wants to respond again?
Sure. It adds property to the city's inventory. So there have been many projects that have been considered for that area and haven't gone forward because of the lack of testing or paying for it. One was an anaerobic digester, which would take our wastewater sludge and kind of mix it up into some kind of manure. And that would require it. There are plants out there for those, I mean, if it fits or not. But to have the testing in that pocket is good. If we were to get a park grant or go for a Justice 40 grant for recreation or to like maybe do, you know, something park and recreation there, we're a step up because we know what's under the soil. We also know what's under the trust that then our use for that going forward has changed because maybe we would keep it a city land and we could cap it with materials to maybe make a new GW highway barrage or it's too far away for park and rap or parks. But we would know how and when we could use it. So it's a lot of money upfront. This, the other is if we, doing it now, it also gives us a baseline of contaminants. And if we can source the pollution back and connect it to one Ferry Street, where's a chance that maybe we could go after some money to clean that, the city property up like we did with Ferry Street in that back corner. It's not going to surprise me if there's cadium there because it's literally across the bike path of where they found it for Mike's, Mike Nishan's. So it's something good to have in the back pocket. We're trying to, we are low on shovel-ready projects. So this is how we build back up, doing these kinds of testings. And that's, in the instant, it's around park and rap. But in the future, it could be, it could be something else. It has nothing to do with park and rap. But this is how we're starting. And one of the reasons why the request is brought forward by John, but at my urging to like, let's just figure out what's there.
It is contaminated. So we could look at cap. So there's a lot of mitigation for contaminated land. There's a lot of money for it. So you can, depending on, say, like where cadium or hazardous material, can you cap it and then do something on top of it? Can you?
Super caping, you mean like put like asphalt over top of it?
Yeah. Not that I'm taking a side, but there have been skid parks that are built over contaminated land because of the material you can use. But also you can, you know, build something on a certain kind of slab. Sometimes you can isolate.
Um, sometimes you can isolate the materials, we did a little bit or, uh, we had to do that a little bit at, um, Ferry Street. When we started digging into the, the hill, so to know what we have. Right, I think it's like potentially eight usable acres, um. And then to know with the contamin, if there is contamination, how many acres would still be developable? Um, where that contamination is, is it where we need to have a road to get in that? Um.
Cause this is, I'm assuming this is right across from the pond area, correct?
Yeah, um.
So is there, is there concern of that contaminated soil impacting that pond?
It are, yeah, I mean, I unofficially, you know, I'm not a environmentalist or waterologist or whatever, but. Bottom of that pond have, have mysteries of chemicals.
Oh, sure, yes.
And, and that runs right, the canal runs right back into the manhandle arcadia.
Right, right, right.
You know, the, um, so it's, hopefully most of it floods right into the wastewater.
Done?
I'm done now.
It's a Millside Park thing, it, it's no just a thirty street, no thirty spot parcel, it's gonna be in the Millside Park. It's gonna Millside Park the whole part or just particular area in Millside Park?
Just two, just two locations at Millside. Two location in Millside and it's to the right of the ban shell.
Um. Yeah.
That's in case you wanna build something.
Just in case we wanna build something there.
Okay, that's important to know.
Thank you.
Anything else?
He knows that it only like, I think it was like fifteen hundred dollars, it only added to the total price by just having those two on that.
Really, because most of the money is needed for the Ferry Street property.
Yes, mostly, ninety percent is Ferry Street money.
All right, any other questions, comments? Here is none, may I have an appropriate, uh, may I have a motion to approve thirty-eight thousand dollars from free cash? For park environmental review and soil sample.
So much.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, now the city-owned plus, this is me, guys. And I wanted to explain it. Um, the CPA committee, which I chair, approved, was approached by the, uh, Congregational Church. About seeing if their clock, which has been stuck at a quarter after five for years. Could be repaired. Um, and the biggest question is, who owns the clock? And the reason we wanted to bring that up, to determine ownership, was because of what's known as the anti-AID amendment. We're gonna use taxpayer money, we're CPA money or regular general fund money. We can't use it for a nonprofit or a church. But if we own the clock and we, we've determined what parts of the clock we own, then we can use taxpayer money. So we asked the city attorney, CPA asked the city attorney to make a determination, and based on all the evidence, including. Nineteen forty-six, we purchased a clock apparently, there's been many times where we actually had a person. Uh, who was on staff to be the clock keeper that went away, it was a budget years ago. Um, there was a thirty-five thousand dollar appropriation for maintenance at one point under Mayor Taznik. All of that led the city attorney to conclude that we do own the clock. But to make it formal, we have a letter agreement, which I included in the packet. Between the city attorney, between the city and the, the church board, which designates the clock is a city-owned clock. And designates what parts of that, which would include the faces on the outside, the mechanism. Uh, on the outside, the surfaces around the clock, there's a little roof that covers the clock, uh, the bell, all of that is city-owned property. Um, so that was important to determine, and once we determine that. The eventuality of using CPA funds requires through master general law that we have. A design done of what we want to do to renovate it. Now, the mayor and I debated this on the level of maintenance, I wanna show you. Through, uh. What got me interested in this, um. I don't know why it doesn't get any bigger than that, but.
I doubt it, but you have to move it.
Yeah. So as you see this, all right, now it's not gonna work for me, right? Um, you can see how damaged the clock is on the surface, this is old wood, I'm a little worried that's gonna fall down. There are parts of the clock that. Are so badly damaged because they haven't been maintained, one of the things that's important. To understand is climate change has increased the level of wind and destruction at that level of height. So you can see this company that came in and did an evaluation for the church, looked at all these things that had bad. Um. So that affected my thinking that we ought to get this clock fixed. It is a historic element in the city. In Main Street, we have the clock, we have city, the Old Town Hall, now we're gonna have a library. Um, the clock to me is important, if you look inside, this is the old structure of the mechanism. I compare it to having hamsters and wheels to run it, 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 it was repaired a couple of times. My contention is, and, is that in order to get this stuff fixed, and I sent this to you so you can read it more closely. Would be ridiculously expensive and would require more maintenance over the years, we want to minimize maintenance because we don't know where the budgets will be. Ten years from now, it costs ten thousand dollars right now just to get a lift, to get up to the clock to fix the outside. Um, and the mechanism that is proposed, this company gave, gave us, gave the church a. Proposal that included digital mechanics to run the clock within seconds per year. And a digital bell ringer, the bell itself. Um, is a ton, has a big hammer, a ton, and they stopped ringing it because it was damaging the steeple. I asked Greg Roland to write an email to you guys, you might have seen it, it tells, I asked him. If the question comes up, can the steeple, is the steeple in good shape, but we're gonna fix the town clock, you still own the steeple? He said it's in very good shape, it's been looked at, and, and that email, uh, is for you, so I, I'm not worried that we're fixing a clock. In an old steeple that's gonna fall down anyway. In any case, um, we need the free cash in order to. Get this design done, and this design includes project management, we don't wanna stick the planning department with managing this clock right here. So project management is part of this free cash, uh, this design and free cash, the design will come up with an RFP to send it out to. Diverted company which did the original clock recommendation, uh, repair, uh, is one company, uh, and they're the ones that we base our decision. My biggest worry is that if we tried to restore it to its original, I think it would be fiscally irresponsible. Um, because of maintenance down the road, look at what's happened when we didn't fix it over the years, this is what I'd call bad deferred maintenance. In any case, um. That's where we are with it, and, uh, I thank the mayor for coming up with this, it's about two hundred fifty thousand because. The clock itself and the bell ringer is about a hundred and thirty thousand, but you gotta have electricians come in, you gotta get up to it. You gotta do a site work, there's all kinds of things, so Mike Owens, the, our purchaser said, we should figure two fifty. And usually you do ten percent, so he said three thirty, ten percent is usually the cost of the architect that would do the design. The design is the RFP for, that we'd send out to get the cost of, you know, general contractors as well as that. I'm hopeful for CPA money, I think this is an excellent project for CPA, it's historic, it's historic to fix this law. It's become something of an obsession of mine, I don't know why, but, uh, it affected me at the CPA level. Very big, so you could put that in. Um, I just think it's right there in the center of our town and it's stuck on quarter after five for years and years, so. And when I saw the pictures. Yeah, it's right twice a day. Any case, uh, that's why you have this in front of you. Questions?
I have a question, so, um. So when you say the steeple, right, so the, the exterior photos that I saw, it looks like a mess.
Yeah, that's the clock face.
That's the clock face, but this, this, but the steeple structure, but the steeple system, that is intact. But the clock face, the exterior is all going to be replaced, and the clock mechanisms attached to that, right? I just wanna make sure it's like.
That's what we're talking about, if you look at your letter of agreement, it'll tell you specifically, because we wanted to make sure that we do what we own. That's what's gonna be looked at.
So I'm gonna make sure I understood that correctly.
And the idea being ten, fifteen years from now, and the next, whatever, you know. If, if Nicole's not mayor fifteen years from now, what will they do?
Nicole will not be mayor fifteen years from now.
You're bored, you say that, I can't believe, not a lot of things I'm sure of this, but, but.
Anyway, uh, as we see, we stopped fixing it. There was a conclusion by the city attorney back under Mike Taznik, uh, who said, yeah, we own the clock, but then we stopped fixing it, um. So that's what happens when you don't do maintenance, and if we reduce maintenance, the likelihood of it, so I would like to see non-biodegradable acrylic used, for instance, for the faces. When you look at that from the ground, it looks just like it is now. But if we use wood, it has to be painted, it has to be repaired, worms can eat it, also, does it, does it withstand environmental damages? Well, as non-biodegradable materials, people are using PVC on their homes because of that. So I'm just bringing that up, Tom?
So maybe this is just the millennial speaking, but like, if the idea is that we're gonna basically. Put a digital clock up there with a, a thing like.
Well, let me, let me get back.
It's, it's not, but there is like, there's a, the, the timekeeping component is not a, a complex set of gears, it's, there's some, there's a digital component to it.
Well, the digital component is how the person on the ground can look at it and adjust it if necessary. The actual mechanics is mechanical, it's not, it's just modern mechanics. I mean, I think there are gears, I can't answer that.
Okay.
When I said digital, I meant that they can adjust when the bell rings to when the clock strikes twelve, how many rings there are. From their hand on an app.
Right.
And I guess I, I misspoke that way, because it's not digital, it's not a digital number.
Like numeric.
No, 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 it's gonna look just like it looks now, because that's historic, it has.
Yeah, and I, I'm really, I'm open to the idea that things that are important to me are not necessarily things that are important to other people, but like. You know, at the time that these things were built, we didn't have watches or phones or whatever, this was like a vital piece of infrastructure. But now we're in a city where, I mean, I, I don't even own a watch, I literally don't own a watch, I don't have any clocks in my house, I just have this and this. And with just all of our, I, I just feel like, I, I'm okay with, if you say this is important for historical preservation, then like, that's fine, but just. I, I guess there is a part of me, I feel that I'd be remiss without saying, like, with all of just the crumbling infrastructure that we have in the city. Like, why do we feel like this is an important use of what could ultimately be between the free cash and CPA money? Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Well, CPA money can't be used, this is important, can't be used to fix sewers and water, it can only be used for things like. Affordable housing is a big element, and we have the money set aside for that.
Right.
But it can be used for stor, historic purposes.
Do, do we have this much, I mean, I, I guess what I'm wondering, that even there is like, well, so first two questions, the first one is. Do we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now in the historical preservation fund that we don't have? Any other ideas on things that we could spend?
Well, we have, we have a lot of general fund money, and what I refer to that is, yes, there's historical money, there may not be much left in that particular account. But the general money that we do have can only be used for historical preservation, affordable housing or.
Right.
Open space, so when I refer to that is the use of historic, the, the use of CPA money can only be used. For historic preservation in this case, it doesn't have to come directly from that account, it has to be, come from CPA money.
Right.
But CPA money can only be used for one of those three tenants.
Yeah, and I guess just what I'm saying is that if there was ever a situation that came up where there was a dollar that could be sent on either affordable housing. Or restoring an old clock, I would always one hundred percent of the time want it to go to affordable housing.
I'm hoping to set aside seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for affordable housing.
Right.
We have over a million dollars, I forget what it is, one point two million in the, in the fund, the CPA fund. The general feeling is we spent money in historical preservation for city space in the Old Town Hall.
Mm-hmm.
So the CPA money that's left, we could still fix, we, we probably will have to fix the pool. And this clock and a lot of it for affordable housing, and that's just this year. The budget gives us more money every year, and that money can be put into these other projects, I don't, I, I, I'm a big affordable housing man.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't feel we should neglect something that has been neglected.
Well.
And it's historic, so.
I, I, yes, and, and this is sort of like, I, I, this is venturing into an area where I feel my own line of questioning might become. Inappropriate because we're not actually talking about, we're talking about some future thing instead of the thirty thousand dollars. For design, which we're here right now, whi, which I don't necessarily have a objection to, given the sheer amount of free cash that we have right now. But what I am saying is that if there was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we could either spend on. Further affordable housing work or a clock, I would have a really big problem with spending it on a clock. When we could be spending that money on more affordable housing, just given. How impossible it is for anyone who doesn't already own a helm or isn't very wealthy. To ever hope to live in this town ever again, and what a general drag that is, I mean. That, so I just wanna just voice that, like, I have no problem with us, let's do this design work and then we have it, you know, and then whatever. Comes down the line is fine, but I just, if there's gonna be a conversation about CPA money that could be used. On a park project or a housing project or this, this is just about as, this is out of those three, it's the bottom of, of my personal priorities, I just.
But can we do them all, if I feel we can, I think we can.
I just don't think we have enough money right now, if we spent all of CPA and every cent we had on free cash on affordable housing, we would not. Meet our city's current housing needs, like, we could just dump every dollar of free cash that we have and the entire CPA. Into housing tomorrow and it wouldn't fix the problem, so I don't know that there's actually a solution where we can do it all, at some point there is.
Well, I'm only going by what I know of what we have in, in our balances and what we've set aside.
Sure.
And we have to have an appropriation request from the projects that are out there. I, I can't deny any of what you're saying. I, I, I'd like to see this clock fixed, if it's not click, fixed now, number one, I don't think we'll ever not have an affordable housing. Number two, historically, it's important to the history and of our community, however. I have to balance that. If the CPA decides not to do it, or the council decides not to do it, I'm not gonna cry about it, but I feel it would be. Too bad, because I think that's what's been happening for the last twenty years.
Yeah.
We've not done anything with it.
I agree.
And we own it, so. I don't know, I can't, I can't argue with you, because I'm an affordable housing guy, and I wanna put, I've already got something in front of the CPA to actually put money into the affordable housing account. Because general fund money in there can be used for anything, historic, affordable, open space, but if you put it into the affordable housing account, it can only be used for that. I wanna put seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in there.
Yeah.
And that puts it aside, now we don't know what we're gonna get there, plus we get more money every year. Um, so this is a one-time expense that I hope we won't have to do for twenty more years. But I can't argue with you, Tom, I think your affordable housing is so huge.
I, I mean, it doesn't, like I said, I feel like we're, I, I apologize for taking this away from the conversation about whether we should. Spend thirty thousand dollars on design work, which again, I don't actually have an objection to doing that design work. I just think that, given the size of the actual repair project. It's sort of raised an eyebrow for me, and my, I just am saying, for the record, it might raise an eyebrow in the future depending on what other. Needs exist out of that fund, but that's all, I don't have a problem with, with, because if we do the design work, we have a design work, you know, then, you know. Needs exist out of that fund, but that's all. I don't have a problem with, 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 because if we do the design work, we have a design work, you know, then, you know.
Well, the other thing is CPA money is constant. Doesn't turn over like free cash. It's there. And we get our budget money at the end of the year. We'll have more money to set aside for affordable housing. So I'm just arguing that there's going to be funds available for affordable housing and for the pool and for other things. I've looked at this. Um, I wouldn't put it forward if I didn't think we could afford it.
Right.
But that's all I'm saying. Ronnie?
So I just have a quick question. So. I know that you are passionate about this and I know that this.
I think I'm too passionate about it.
That, that's totally, I think passion is a good thing, but I guess the question I have is this, is this a group of people who are talking about this? Or is this passion for this clock? Is that really, what do you wanna see and?
Well, I, I got attracted to it through Greg Rowland and the church and, and the CPA was very interested. And if you look at projects all over the state, historic preservation, there's a ton of clocks that have been fixed with CPA fund. I mean, it's one of the biggest things. If, New England is all about steeples and clocks.
Sure. I'm not denying.
So that's what, but I have, I can't say there's a lot of people behind it. No. I'm leading the charge. I can't deny it.
Yep.
And I'm not denying.
If you say no to me, I'm not gonna, you're still my friends. It's okay.
Well, I was never in question.
Not her. I, I don't know.
I, I, I was, it was never like, and I'm not doubting at all the appropriateness of it. As a, as a historical preservation funding. I, so. I just think that when we, when we move forward with this, there's gonna be, if, if it's not coming out of earmarked historical preservation funds. Just the, the amount of money, just for what, for what. I, I would personally get out of it. I think there's, I, there's a part of me that is a little, there's some, but that's a future conversation.
And you bring up a good point. This probably won't get to us until the new budget. And a new budget will have earmarked historical preservation funds that can't be used for historical, can't be used for affordable housing. So there you go.
And then that's fine. That's really, well, yeah, we'll see.
It's put in every year, every budget. Ten percent of the budget has to be into.
It can be used for housing and we have a big historical.
You can't take historical preservation money out of historical preservation line.
Yeah.
And put it into affordable housing.
I'm.
Just like you can't take affordable housing money.
Point of process. I, I, I started this, so I am sorry, but this is not really at the time or place that we should be discussing.
If you look at the, the law, you can't do it, but only that small amount. The rest of it, you can't. Anyway, sorry, Tom. She, she brought it up and I'm just correcting.
Yeah. And I started this whole thing, so I apologize.
All right. So let's talk about the thirty thousand. Anything else? Omar?
I agree a hundred percent. I would tell. I think the thirty thousand will be decided at this time to do it, but in the future. Someone who grew up in a really, 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 really poor community, saying have a quarter million dollars to fix a clock. I think is, uh, something that we have to say this, this is privilege.
Yeah.
So, uh, for now, I think we need it. Cause we need to know the condition of the clock.
Then it might not be that.
But for the conversation, it's, uh, to be deep because it's a ton of money.
Okay.
And potentially there's other revenue sources that we're not even thinking about. So there's no reason to not go forward with looking at it. I just.
But that's a good point. It might be grants.
The, the number just kind of made me like.
Well, I have to be honest with you, but that's a high number, I hope.
And so I'm just gonna be honest as someone who's broken poverty. I'm, I'm struggling. Like I have. Nothing but respect for historical preservation and that's also just a big chunk of change to say. We're not gonna do this. Um, and so I would rather see. Searching for grants and things like that before we commit city dollars. I just. I'm. I'm struggling with. Thank you. So I'm just gonna say that.
Okay. But we still have to know what it's gonna cost before we. Reach the part where we might start off. And you made me think food for thought. If there's a historical preservation line and we get a grant to match that, that's a lot better than using affordable housing money. I'll look at that. Okay. So the thirty thousand. Anything else? Take a motion to approve thirty thousand free cash for the town clock design?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? No? Okay.
Sorry.
Twenty-nine thousand for school Medicare and city Medicare. I say no, I don't wanna pay it.
I know you.
Are we adjourning?
Uh, we have to pay this because it's a line in which we have salary increases and we didn't have enough funds in the Medicare accounts. Which we have to give to the federal government.
Yep.
That's basically it, right? So I don't wanna mess with the IRS. Counselors, do you wanna mess with the IRS?
Love to.
Let's see what happens.
I'm behind, Tom.
Well, behind.
I'm gonna send them your way when they call.
Yeah, that's.
Tom, he's over there.
No, I'm, yeah, this, I mean, it happens, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would make a motion to.
Approve forty-nine thousand?
Forty-nine, yeah.
All in favor? I don't necessarily think, Emily, you have to be, well, we have another one. Well, that's payroll processing. What, the last one?
I think that's the last one.
Emily, I don't think you need to be there. I mean, it's IRS is IRS, so.
They're not.
Wednesday.
The IRS is there. You don't need to be.
Six thousand for payroll processing. Is this because we have more payroll than we anticipated?
Thank you. The Harper's payroll service actually increased their fees this year. And, um, actually, again, since I started after the budget process last year, I don't know how it was sort of determined what was in there. Hopefully in the future, next year or two, we'll be taking payroll back in-house, so we won't have payroll service.
So this is external payroll processing?
Yes. Yes. Right now we use Harper's payroll. So with new software. We should have it back in-house and there won't be any external payroll servicing.
Sure.
Uh, all right. Good. Any questions? Take a motion to approve six thousand for free cash for payroll process?
Second.
All in favor? All right, all right. Apparently, our next meeting will be May tenth and we are getting, according to Barbara, seven more appropriations. May tenth is not a budget hearing. May eleventh is the first budget hearing. So May is gonna be a finance committee, very busy.
That's our month, isn't it?
Okay.
Hey, Jerry?
Uh, yes.
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Stop recording.